Mr. Spiegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Rumpf.
Here.
Stand for Ledge Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lauer.
Yes, I wanted to bring to council's attention, to the community's attention, the passing of William Johnson. Bill was the solicitor for Peterstownship for 35 years.
Wow.
And he was a man of amazing integrity, and he was also a man who enjoyed life. Bill spent his, I think, his retired years from after leaving here doing what he actually wanted to do, was at that point, a full-time cowboy and a part-time attorney. But he, like I said, he did such a wonderful job over the years representing the township, and I think he really left an impact here, and he was a great partner to work with. And so I would just like to point out that what we have here is the passing of someone who's really made a difference in our community.
Counsel's condolences to his family, and I appreciate all of his service in the past. Thank you for the tribute.
I don't know if any of them still live around here. Did you hear from someone that was local? Because he moved to Arizona.
I think he actually was back here at the end of his life. When you read the obituary, he was active in church outside of Washington, so.
Hmm, okay.
I think he maintained a residence here, because he would come back periodically. I would run into him on Washington.
I'd see him in court once in a while.
Yeah.
Okay. You never settle a load on me.
Thank you. I'd like your approval of minutes. Peterstownship Council meeting, March 11th, 2024.
Motion second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Of seven-nothing Lauer, or seven-nothing Mr. Lauer. Let the record show to Ms. Shanifel who's down in the meeting. I'd like to accept the transcript of the public hearing held by Peterstownship Council on February 26, 2024.
So moved second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Seven-nothing, Mr. Lauer. Special reports, Peterstownship Deer Management Program.
How are you?
Good.
Good. All right, so the third year of the management program has concluded here. The archery portion of the program ended at the end of January. This year, we took 70 deer through that program. The sharpshooting took place from February 2nd to February 17th over the course of nine shifts with Officer Stevic, Corporal Austin Klein, and I, and we removed 250 deer from the township, that equated to about 28 deer per shift. There's some, there was a report submitted, but I mean, from the beginning of this, we've talked about kind of how it impacts the major arteries and roadways. Of that 250, 188 of those deer were taken within a third of a mile of our major arteries, 19 Valley Brook Beebout, Venetia, Waterdam, and Thomas. So that's kind of a refocus tension. The other ones were taken on other properties, or residents have reached out to us about damage and things like that, as we try to address that also.
So Jason, I think last year, we had a map of specifically where the deer, can we get that?
Absolutely. I do have that for you. I apologize for not sending that over. I'll send that to you. As a, so as a result of that, all the deer from specifically the sharpshooting is required to be donated to local food pantries through Hunter Sharing the Harvest. Through that, we donated approximately 11,200 pounds of venison through various places, the Greater Washington Food Bank, Food Helpers, the City Mission, the Washington Food Pantry, Allenport Food Pantry, Denora Food Pantry. It's even, like last year, I think some of it even made its way down into Uniontown, Fayette County area and things like that, to some of their food pantries down there. Hunter Sharing the Harvest, you know, the biggest cost of this program is processing, which the township puts a bill for. Hunter Sharing the Harvest and working with them, the last few years, they reimbursed the township now 50% of that cost also. So that's the gist of the program. I mean, if there's any questions, and Mr. Stigwale will have that map for you.
Any questions or comments from council?
What the total roadkill number been last year?
Last year, it was 96 accidents total, so.
Do you know previous year what it was?
I'm gonna say 94.
That's about the same.
About the same, yeah. Don't, I may have that.
It's, I don't need the exact number.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, when we started and looking at this, back to 2013 to now, in the last 10 years, our accidents have doubled, our deer-related crashes have doubled from in the 40s to the 90s. So, you know, our goal was to look at this over a five-year period and see if we can kind of stop that trend and hopefully reduce it moving forward. We're in year three, so we'll keep moving forward.
Corollary to that has to be forests that are being taken down for development.
The development is a big factor, and I think, you know, I talked to some people with the Game Commission, things like that, are the mound winters we've had over the last two years is really helping the population, the deer population boom. We've had more harvests in the archery program this past year than we've had in, you know, a lot of years looking back, so there's just more deer as a result of that. And to your point, the continued development is pushing them out onto the roadways and into areas where we normally wouldn't see that quantity of deer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Dr. Prosser, before you move on, I'd ask Chief Glover to come tonight to talk about an initiative that the police department's organizing with township employees, so.
Thanks for coming, Chief.
Thank you.
Evening, sir. Thank you, I appreciate it. So, most of you are probably familiar with the Peters Creek Christian Church Cemetery. It's at the corner of Sugar Camp and Churchill Roads. That's a aerial view. The cemetery has fallen into a pretty grave state of disrepair. I reached out to the owners of that cemetery. The owners are currently the Brightwood Christian Church in Bethel Park. The Peters Creek Christian Church was, used to be at that site, burned down well before any of us were alive. But the congregants then opened a church in Bethel Park. That church is in financial difficulty, there's not a lot of parishioners, and the folks that used to take care of that cemetery for Peters Creek Christian Church, which obviously was the Brightwood, they have all passed away. And so they did it out of, you know, they were Peterstownship residents, they received no compensation for it, they just took care of it on their own. They have passed. So the church has really no way of fixing this cemetery up. I think you can all agree, it's kind of an eyesore for the township, and it's, I feel kind of disrespectful to leave it in that state if we can possibly do something about it. So I reached out to the pastor from Brightwood Christian Church. She was more than overjoyed that somebody reached out to her about it. I told her that my plan was to try and get a work party together, get it taken care of as much as we could, and from there, if we got it back to a state where the only thing that really needed done was lawn maintenance, would she be able to take care of it from there? She assured me that she would be able to do that. So I reached out to a number of the police officers who've agreed to volunteer their time. We talked with Jared Scott from Public Works. He and a couple of the supervisors have agreed to help us, along with Mr. Lauer's blessing, yes.
This is the reason why we're here tonight, though. The nature of what needs to be done there is beyond the capability of volunteers, and it requires some larger equipment that the Public Works Department has. Given the nature of the work, is what, the kind of work that they do, they are not permitted under the Fair Labor Standards Act to volunteer their time. And what we're asking from council is permission to have the Public Works Department go in with the equipment needed to clear these larger trees and that, and do that as part of their normal work tasks. The other thing is, there are trees that need to be dropped on that property, and we can't drop those on the day we have a whole bunch of volunteers out there cleaning the grounds up. So what Chief Glover and I would like is that council give me permission to have the Public Works Department go work on this property.
So any insurance coverage issues?
I don't think so. I don't know how it's any different than what we're doing every day.
Well, as I recall, I think if they, the owners of the cemetery, don't keep it clean, I think under Pennsylvania law, the municipality actually has an obligation to do it, right?
We have to take it over. I know that's a process.
Yeah, but you're correct in that, and we already own a cemetery. If this isn't rectified, you will own this and be responsible for its care.
I'm trying to avoid that.
Which one do we own right now?
That's in that Taylor.
Down, down where, what is it, Orchard?
Well, that's in.
Orchard 12.
It's in Orchard 12. Okay.
Blackmore Cemetery, I believe is what it's called. And it's beautiful. Whoever's taking care of it is doing a wonderful job.
If it's a consensus of council, we're gonna get the Public Works Department to go in and do the heavy lifting before we get volunteers in there doing this other work.
Okay. Absolutely. Do you need a motion?
I don't think so. I just, as long as council's all on board.
Yes, Ann.
Ms. Shanifel.
Did you check with the jail, too? Because they still, don't they still have their furlough-to-work program? I know they can't clear the trees, but you could get volunteers, because they...
If I need more than one day.
Yeah, I mean, I think you should contact the jail, too, the county jail, because they have that furlough-to-work program. You don't need to be tying up our police officers.
No, no, this is all, the police officers will be on their own time.
I know, but you still, you know what I'm saying? You've got those prisoners up there that need some with you, too.
Is anyone on council opposed?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Portion of the meeting for audience comments, limited to five minutes on non-agenda items. Anyone have comments from the audience? You should have just stayed there, Ms. Shanifel.
I was sick last meeting, I'm so sorry. Is this on?
It's on, you don't have to hold it.
All right, because I can't, I can't hear that I'm, you know, talking. But anyway, I was sick, I'm sorry. But I wanted to check in if Mr. Lauer had checked in to the leaf vacuuming.
I've not yet.
You did not do that yet?
No.
Okay. When's he ordered to do that? Like, by what time?
Well, it will be, it will be part of the discussion.
Before fall, okay, before fall. All right. How about, did you check into the memorial service? Was I being lied to by Ryan about that? Are we gonna do a memorial section in the park? I brought that up to you, too, remember? You said you were gonna check into it, because Ryan's gone, and he told me, because I wanted to dedicate a tree to a friend.
Well, we still do that, so that's, yes, that's something that...
But you're not gonna have, like, a section for...
No.
Okay, well, all right, I need to, who can I talk to about how I donate a tree?
Give me a call tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other comments from the audience? Okay, unfinished business, seeing none. New business, proclamation declaring week of April 7th to 13th, 2024 as National Library Week in Peterstownship. Mr. Lauer.
So the theme for the National Library Week is Ready, Set, Library. This theme is grounded in the fact that libraries have a long history of being a place to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue one passion through book clubs, storytimes, craft classes, lectures, and more. Nowhere is this theme, this year's theme, better demonstrated than the Peterstownship Library. The wide array of programs, classes, and resources offered by the library, and the dedication of our library staff makes the Peterstownship Library an institution that is cherished and embraced by our community. And it's my recommendation that Peterstownship Council issue a proclamation declaring the week of April 7th through 13th as National Library Week in Peterstownship.
So moved.
And in doing so, recognize the value of the library, as well as the dedication of the library staff.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Seven-nothing, Mr. Lauer.
Linda Esposito, who's a longtime employee of the children's libraries here, to accept that proclamation.
You can read it if you want.
You can?
I would, why not?
All right, this Peterstownship proclamation commemorating National Library Week in Peterstownship. Whereas, the Peterstownship Public Library serves as a vital educational resource to the community, and was recognized by PA Forward as the first Gold Star Library in Western Pennsylvania. And whereas, the library has enabled residents, regardless of race, creed, sex, age, national origin, or socioeconomic status, to make educated decisions by promoting unrestricted access to information. And whereas, the library offers residents the ability to utilize technology, attend programs, and access services, often for free or with nominal charges. And whereas, the library is staffed by information professionals who thoughtfully develop collections and programs that are wide-ranging, exploring the nature of our challenged, changing world. And whereas, the PA Forward literacy is power. Initiative highlights how libraries and their staff encourage literacy in basic information, civic, and social, health, and financial, which contributes to greater personal and community success. And whereas, America is celebrating National Library Week, including April 9th, as National Library Workers' Day, recognizing the contributor, contributions of library workers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Peterstownship Council does hereby proclaim the week of April 7th to 13th, 2024 as National Library Week in Peterstownship, and further encourage us all residents to participate in library-sponsored events and explore the library's offerings. The end. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item, authorization of Brookwood Road traffic calming plan. Mr. Lauer.
Actually, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Zabidus, since he's kind of led this.
So if council may recall, we had a progress update on this subject back in, I think, November, December. I'll just recap the history. Last year, we received a request for traffic calming from a resident on Brookwood Road. We informed them that in order to move that request forward, they need a petition with more than 20 signatures from the neighborhood. They got that petition, forwarded it to us. At that point, we authorized TPD, our traffic engineer, to go out and do speed and volume counts on Brookwood Road. The speed counts came back such that the 85th percentile speed was more than 10 miles per hour above the posted speed limits, which therefore qualifies it for traffic calming. At that point, we authorized TPD to basically evaluate the road and come up with some appropriate traffic calming measures for Brookwood Road, the plan you see before you. The next step is we sent the plan out for a vote by the residents in the affected area. The vote came back in the affirmative. I have the numbers somewhere.
165 ballots mailed to residents, 113 ballots received, 85 households voted in favor, which is 75%, 28% voted not in favor.
So that qualifies it for consideration of implementation by council. So that's where we are tonight. It's a raised intersection. We went over this, you know, back in November at Judith and Brookwood, along with some curved delineators, some thermoplastic rumble strips, some signage, some pavement markings, and slow and curve signs that you see on a lot of the roads. Part of the plan was already implemented. When TPD was out there, they noticed that, for reasons other than speeding, mainly sight distance out of the church, always stop was warranted at Brush Run Road. So that's already been installed by Public Works, along with the stop bars. And basically, the plan moving forward would be, if council moves this ahead tonight, that Brookwood is on the paving plan for this year. So we would pave Brookwood Road from Trillium to Brush Run Road, we'll pave in Brush Run Road as well. Once we get that paving done, we'll actually have Public Works do the delineators and the rumble strips, and the pavement markings and signage and stuff. That's stuff we can do in the house. Concurrent with the paving program, we'll have our contractor actually go out and install the raised intersection, similar to the ones that we see on Bowler Hill Road that we've done recently. So that's what we're, before council for tonight, is authorization to implement the traffic calming plan.
On the surveys, the 25% not in favor, did they list why? Was it because of the noise from the strips?
No, we, the ones that did not vote for it, I think generally they felt it wouldn't be effective. Some of, I broke down some of the comments I had. I know a lot of the folks that live in, like, the 200 block, part of their concern was there's a hump in the road that really limits sight distance, and there's some driveways that come out on the road, like, on either side of the hump. So it's tough to see over that, and you're really gunning it to get out of those driveways. But unfortunately, the road's been like that since the beginning of time. We can't change the vertical geometry of the road. We'd have to adjust utilities and driveways, and it would be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the next best thing we can do is try to slow people down on the road. And, you know, in talking to Mike Muggier, our traffic engineer, him and I kind of have a similar feeling, that, you know, there's a lot of development in that Sugar Camp Road, Frobey Road corridor there, too. So the traffic is only going to increase on the road. I suspect that a lot of those people that want to go north are gonna head on to Brookwood Road to get to East McMurray. So I think now's the time to do some type of traffic calming there.
Thank you.
I believe that we implement the traffic calming plan as recommended by the Traffic Calming Committee, the township traffic engineer, and endorsed by the majority of the affected residents who responded.
Okay.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Seven-nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award of contract under Pennsylvania Coast Stars program for the purchase of a truck for use by Public Works Department.
So if you'll recall, in December of '22, Peterstownship ordered a Kenworth cabin chassis at a cost of $125,800. At the time when the truck was ordered, the dealership indicated that it would take 18 months before the truck could be delivered. When we checked on the status of the truck a year later, on December 2023, we were informed by the dealership that the order was never placed, and council authorized the cancellation of the contract. Jared Scott is proposing the purchase of a 2025 International Cabin chassis. The purchase of the truck is being completed under Coast Stars. Hill International Truck has provided a quote of $115,320. That quote is not only less than what the Kenworth was, but it includes a 72-month manufacturer's warranty on the cabin chassis. The dump body and upfitting will be purchased separately at an estimated cost of $115,000. While the budget doesn't have an appropriation for this, there was an appropriation at the time when the Kenworth was ordered. This will cause us to amend the budget, but it's gonna be my recommendation that council places an order with Hill International Truck in the amount of $115,320.75.
And how long before this truck arrives, then?
This truck may well be here before the end of the year.
So we're gonna make sure that they actually can build it.
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that we award a contract to Hill International Truck, Inc., in the amount of $115,320.75, under the Coast Stars program for the purchase of the 2025 International Truck model MV607, including an extended manufacturer's warranty.
Second. Motion in the second?
Question?
All in favor?
No. I have a question, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis.
When we started to purchase, what I recall, stainless steel truck bodies, dump bodies?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we were anticipating being able to move them from truck body to truck.
I don't remember that that...
That was one of the benefits that I think was pondered.
I would have to check with Jared and Troy, the mechanic, but I'm not sure that that's gonna be possible.
It may not be, but I guess, is that part, then, of the value of the resale on the ones that we are...
Oh, I think it enhances the resale value, because those truck bodies are in decent shape, unlike the steel bodies we used to have, that would be fairly rusted out from the salt.
Any other discussion? Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Seven-nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, request to expand Peters Creek Sanitary Sewer Service Area.
The Peterstownship Sanitary Authority is requesting input from its member communities concerning a request to expand the authority's service area in Nottingham Township to accommodate a proposed residential development. If you look on that drawing there, you'll see that small little blip, which is what they're talking about. This is an enlargement of that piece of property. The thing is, the property is outlined in red, the area that it would be expanded to is that hashed area. It can all be serviced by gravity, it doesn't require a pump station, so I don't think there's any reason why that we shouldn't accommodate the request to expand the service area. I talked to Doug King, he is the chairman of the Board of Supervisors in Nottingham, and Nottingham supports that expansion. So they're just looking for a sense of council as to whether or not, because what would have to happen, you would have to adopt a resolution modifying what's known as the Act 537 plan to increase the service area, and that would take formal action by each municipality to do that, so.
And we don't see this having any impact on the capacity of the treatment plants or anything like, it's not gonna adversely, like, someone's not gonna develop something in Peters and then not be able to do it, because they're gonna say, there's not enough taps now, because we've allowed this.
No, this all drains the clerton as well, so.
All right. All right, I'll make a motion that Peterstownship Council express its support for expanding the service area of the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority to include approximately 15 additional acres in Nottingham Township.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Seven-nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, resolution authorizing increase in Peters Creek Sanitary Authority Board members' meeting attendance fee.
Yes, Phil Benato, who is the solicitor for the Peter Creek Sanitary Authority on behalf of the authority's members, is requesting Peterstownship Council authorize an increase in the members' meeting attendance fees. Currently, the fee is $50 per meeting, and the authority's board is asking to increase it to 75. The last increase occurred about 10 years ago. I'm gonna give Mr. Lewis credit for this, because he and I spoke after the docket went out, and he reminded me that in the past, there is a limitation that applies to governing boards for council, but it also applies to authorities, which says that you can't increase or diminish the, what you compensate board members for, and any salary change can only be effective for the subsequently appointed members. The resolution, as presented here tonight, doesn't say that. It actually is intended to increase the attendance fees for all current members. I had a chance to speak to Mr. Benato, I had a chance to speak to Mr. Lepay, the townships represented on the board, they're meeting tonight, and are going to discuss this there. So what I'm gonna suggest to council is that, until we get clarification from their solicitor on the basis on which we can do this, that we table the resolution.
I'll make a motion that we table this matter, pending further information.
Second. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Seven-nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, request for extension of time for the Frobey Farm residential development as submitted on December 14th, 2024.
So Steve Glover, on behalf of Frobey Management, is requesting a time extension related to Act of the... action of the Froby Farm Residential Development as submitted on December 14, 2023. Under the provisions of the municipality's planning code, Peter Township is required to approve or deny an application for preliminary plan within 90 days as measured from the date of the planning commission meeting following the submission of the application. In this case, the clock started on January 11th. The deadline for action is April 9, 2024. I'm going to ask Mark to go through the timeline and what's happened here since the application was submitted.
Sure, thanks, Paul. So as it says up there, we received the application September 14th. This is roughly to maybe three days after this board's denial of what we call Froby Farms 1. They submitted Froby Farms 2 on December 14th. We have that 90-day clock that's starting at the next planning commission meeting, which was January 11th. From there, we, as a staff, sent out the plans on December 14th, roughly shortly after that, probably three days after that, we sent them out to our consultants, that was LSSE, TPD, as well as in-house, and we reviewed those plans and drafted several letters of comments. Those comments were provided to the developer on January 17th. We then sat down with the developer on January 18th to go through line by line each of those comments from each of those, both the staff and the consultants. Those items were then taken to the planning commission in February 8th, where there is a recommendation to deny. That exact same plan, along with all those comments that were still not addressed, were then brought for this board on February 26th, where they were at, where they asked for a time extension, and we tabled it because there was no need for the time extension at that point. And that brings us to today, where you're still looking at the same plan. That's one of the next items on the agenda. There still has been no movement on any of the comments that staff or our consultants have, and before you is then an extension to increase the time by a 90-day time extension.
So we've seen no movement since December 14th?
Correct. And if the drawings that the township has now are no different than those drawings that were initially submitted?
What's the reason we don't want to just deny the application?
Well, you have, there's two separate items. The first item is a request for a time extension, and that item needs to be disposed of first before we talk about the, talk about the plan and what council may or may not want to do with regard to that. But the, it's a valid request for an extension. Whether or not the information here supports an extension is something that council needs to decide. I do think it's telling, though, that the drawings that we saw on December 14th are the same drawings you're seeing tonight. The other thing that I would point out to you is that when that letter went out on January 17th, it was the township, not the developer, that requested the meeting to go over each of the items. And we took the time and gathered not only the township staff, but our consulting engineers to make sure that it was clear where we perceived that there be deficiencies in the plan. And despite that, there was no change in the plan on February 8th, nor is there any change in the plan on February 26th or March 25th, so.
Haven't there been, there been other plans submitted for this property too since, right?
There is a third iteration of.
And when was that one submitted? Do you remember?
It was January 22nd, I believe. I can tell you a second.
This is the third?
So this is, we're talking about version two.
Version two. There's a version three.
Right.
Wasn't there one on appeal or something like that?
That's Froby Farm 1.
I think what's important, too, this time extension doesn't speak to any submission submitted to the township looking to address issues with the ordinance for compliance, such that Mark would say, well, we're waiting to get X or Y. We don't have anything from the applicant following their submission, following the meeting with, I can't tell you how many people, I was there as well, with engineers and staff going over all what we believe to be deficient in the plan relative to the ordinance. And again, this extension, there was no submissions, no really reaching out, sitting back down with staff to show what they plan to do to comply. And the extension of time is just that, just for an extension, not to necessarily meet any of these ordinance requirements.
Montgomery, who represents the developers.
And what's the difference then between version two and version three? Because I don't know, have we seen version, we haven't seen version three, have we?
You have not.
Version three has increased density and includes townhouses.
And has there been any work done on version three since they submitted, or is it just sitting there like version two is?
It's sitting there just like version two.
Did it go to planning and a cure?
It has been planning commission.
And what did planning commission say?
It's been tabled until the next meeting.
I'll make a motion that deny the request for extension.
Mr. Chairman, I think the applicant's counsel, if you wanted to speak, if that's okay with council?
Absolutely.
Hi, Dave Montgomery, attorney for Froby Management, the developer. We're here to request an extension of the time periods for the two plans. The first plan, as what staff explained, was submitted on December 14, 2023. And I think the timeline is pretty much accurate, although we did receive three letters in February. So there has been activity since that January 18th meeting. There were a raft of letters from Geotech Review, the township engineer, and the staff in the middle of February. So Froby's preparing responses to those. So just out of the buttons of caution, to make sure we address all of them carefully, we're asking for extensions. There doesn't seem to be any countervailing reason why you would deny the request for an extension. Seems like there should be some sort of reason for denial if the council is inclined to do that. And I don't think a reason for that is evident. There are outstanding letters from the middle of February that we're working on, so that's why we're requesting this extension. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention, and we're hoping, just for a reasonable extension without any countervailing reason, why not to grant it?
When does this current time period end?
April 9.
So a month and a half is not enough time to, almost two months? You said the middle of February is when you got those letters?
Right, right, yeah, middle of February.
So two months isn't enough time?
Well, there are three different letters, well, I don't, you know, I think there are several different factors here. There's the geotech, there's the engineering letter, and there's the township letter. Some of the comments are more involved than others, but, you know, this is a, what we think is a reasonable request. I think these sort of requests are routinely granted, and there doesn't seem to be a particular reason for denying it, which you would, I think we'd want to see a particular reason for denying this.
Well, I will, Mr. Montgomery, and again, council's going to vote, but obviously, as you're aware, they have a statutory obligation act within 90 days.
Well, the statute, John, is combined with the statement that there can be a written agreement to extend that.
Well, a request from, we couldn't extend it on our own, correct?
And the municipality has a form for this. So we filled out the form and have submitted the form and the format required by the township. So, I mean, it's a procedure recognized by the township to grant reasonable extension.
Well, I think that also the council has to look at their obligations and whether there's been a reasonable period of time provided. And within that is whether there's, as you know the case law as well as I, there's a good faith obligation on both parties. And I think that's what the planning director has laid out. Since that meeting on, the letter on January 17th, the January 18th meeting, and any subsequent letters, we've received nothing back that the applicant is working towards compliance with the ordinance. If the applicant had, you know, met with township, had submitted plans for additional review to, and I think the engineers, I think that would be a different analysis for council that, hey, we're looking at something, we're looking at nothing. We're looking at the same plan we've looked at. And as the Supreme Court has held, the township doesn't lose its discretionary abilities to act under the statute just because an extension request has been made. They have to look at whether the applicant has a good faith reason and there's a reasonable time to comply. If you recall, council was ready to act in March, and it was on the agenda, and council tabled this. Council was, you know, very much upfront that they were looking to take action on the plan that night. That was roughly 30 days ago. Council asked Mr. Holder, has we received anything, even a phone call or any movement towards compliance? And the answer's been no. So I think council's well within their ability to act as they wish to grant or deny this motion for an extension of time, because in my opinion, a reasonable period of time has been provided, and no information has been submitted that would show that we need this extension, other than your desire to have one.
Well, but I would add to that, we have three comment letters from last month. So we're not talking, we're not, I'm sorry.
For Froby 3, I believe.
Well.
And a lot of those comments were the same comments from Froby 2 that just carried over to Froby 3.
Mark, the deficiencies in Froby 2, are they any different than the deficiencies in Froby 1?
There's a few additional ones, I believe. For the most part, they're similar.
It's an interesting point. There, you might recall, Mr. Cosier, that staff explained that Froby 1 was essentially complying with the ordinances. And council denied it because of a DEP note on a website, it turned out to be wrong, that there was a well located on the site.
And there is more to the denial letter.
Okay, well, that's what the appeal is about. But what I'm, but what I'm trying to say is that the comments we received for Froby 2, we'll call it that, are far more involved than we saw in the first iteration. And the letters I have in my hand relate to Froby Residential, not for the Froby Gardens. So I think, I know there's similar letters for the Froby Townhouse Plan, but what I'm referring to from February are for the Froby Residential Plan. What was I reading?
But again, I think the answer is the same. There's been no submissions, no calls or questions to say, we need more information or we're working on this. There's been really quiet from the applicant's front and nothing for the township to review. So again, there's a 90-day clock placed on the applicant, and the township's looking to say, are you faithfully and good faith moving forward to meeting that deadline? And when the township provides all these deficiencies, not a week, or even if the most recent is probably 30 days ago, and even before that, two months ago, and there has been no movement. And that's the concern. Typical extension request is that staff is looking at revised plans or new submissions. We can't meet the deadline until council. We don't have anything different from the day we've got them in the door, other than the township has advised of the deficiencies that have not been addressed.
I just want to comment, too, on the well. The only thing that was incorrect was the actual location that DEP showed on their website. There is a well there.
That's absolutely incorrect. Absolute, well, listen to me, absolutely incorrect. The well that you described at the meeting was in a particular location, and DEP, the very next day, confirmed that well didn't exist. Now, is there another well on the 80-acre site?
Yes.
It appears that there is, but that had nothing to do with what you came up with in the middle of that meeting. It had nothing to do with it.
Well, and council, I understand, when Mr. Steigall came, he didn't come up with it, he looked at the DEP website. DEP recognized that those existed. We have to listen to them until they tell us we can't.
I'm not disputing that.
Well, I'm just saying it wasn't Mr. Steigall.
But he's trying, he's trying to conflate the two to say that the well that he saw on his film that evening was the well, a different well in a different location of the area.
You clearly don't deal with DEP often, but their web, their GIS system is often off by, I guess in this case, for 1,000 feet or so? Okay, you can smile about it, but that's the fact.
That's not what DEP said.
Well, neither here nor there, there's a well on the property, appears to be a well that's on a spot.
Can I move the question?
So, any other comments other than the well right now in regards to the extension of this?
Mark, what, I don't think we can address this coalescing. What are the deficiencies, what more deficiencies are there in Froby 2 versus Froby 1?
Well, for one, now it is that actual gas well that we talked, that we've talked about. There's no easement around it. They're saying that they're going to plug it, but they don't actually own the well and the right to plug it. There's also, they have not gone through the conservation residential inventory and site design analysis stage of the site planning. That includes some of the tree preservation requirements. There's a number of transportation issues, some of which was brought up by TPD, some of which was brought up by the planning staff. That includes items like the design, schematic design of Froby Road, whether it's going to be widened, how that's going to be reconstructed, as well as the intersection of Froby Road and Meredith Drive. Also in regards to the auxiliary parking, there's a lack of appropriate locations and the quantity of that parking on, in the development itself. There's some issues regarding traffic calling. And again, with the design of Froby Road itself, and LSSE also identified a number of stormwater management issues on the site.
And then the design criteria for the interior roads, whether it's a medium?
Right, a medium cross section or a narrow cross section.
And all this was communicated to the developer when?
January 17th by letter and the 18th in the meeting.
So we're more than two months later and we've seen no movement? Correct? All right, I'll make a motion that we deny the request for extension of time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lowry.
Should I address the Froby Gardens now?
It's the next item on the agenda, is the approval of plan, so.
Next item, agenda approval of Froby Farm Residential Development as shown on drawings prepared by Gibson Thomas Engineering Company dated September 18, 2017.
I don't think that's right.
For Cortez Builders, Inc.
Oh, that's for Froby Management.
Yeah, we got to proof.
Yeah, okay, so is the date correct?
Yes, November 13.
2017?
This was a newer one, no?
All right, I'm reading off the agenda.
I don't think the agenda item's right.
I agree.
No.
Okay, so for those, why?
So, so I'm going to redo item G on the agenda.
It's the Froby Farm plan allotment shown on drawings prepared by JMS Engineering dated November 13, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry.
Was this the Time Home one, or no?
No.
So for the, this is the one we just talked about, so this is Froby 2, right?
Yes, this is the plan we've been talking about for the time extension.
Man, I'm really confused here.
Well, it's just mistyped.
Yeah, you want to describe the plan?
Sure, you can describe the plan real quick. For those of you who aren't familiar with the site, this is located at the intersection roughly of Froby Road and Meredith Drive. What the developer is proposing on the site that was a former agricultural use, has rolling topography, and their proposed development is a four-phase development for approximately 170 single-family homes. They'll be located on lots of a quarter to a third of an acre. Stormwater ponds will be, or stormwater will be handled by three individual facilities. I believe one right in here, one right down in here, and then the other one just off Froby Road there. Sanitary sewer service for Phase 1 will be a gravity-fed system. However, sanitary service for Phases 2, 3, and 4 will be by gravity system to a pump station where it will then be pumped off-site. Peters Creek Sanitary Authority has yet to provide approval of that, that design.
So this plan is being proposed to be developed under the Conservation Residential Overlaid District. And what you see on the screen is the express purpose inside the zoning ordinance for this district, and I've highlighted the fact that it's to protect natural resources, to preserve sensitive natural features, and conserve important natural amenities. To be able to do that, what the zoning ordinance provides for is that there needs to be a conservation residential inventory in site design. That has never been provided, and I personally think it's key to the evaluation of the property because, you know, at that point, you're looking at those natural features, including the trees that have been identified by the Environmental Quality Board. And to date, that hasn't occurred. I'm going to, I'll let Mr. Holder go through again, what are the key deficiencies of the plan?
Under the ordinance.
Yeah, under the ordinance, some of these deficiencies, I see in number one, again, that's the gas well and the associated easements. Our ordinance requires that there be a. Our ordinance requires that there be a 200 eas, 200-foot easement around any existing gas well. That is not shown on the plans. There's also concern regarding the ability of the property to guarantee their ability to plug the onsite gas well, given that it is, has not been determined who owns the well yet. And to Paul's previous point, we have not conducted a conservation residential inventory or site design analysis. This would allow us to identify some of those natural and physical existing site features that we should be planning around, rather than just looking at it as a flat piece of paper and planning accordingly. We have not seen any type of conceptual design for the FROB road, Meredith Road intersection, as well as the cross-section of FROB road as it's redesigned as it moves through the And then also relation to the cross-sections of the, the internal road network, right now it is designed as a narrow road cross-section. Staff believes it should actually be, be more appropriate to be the medium cross-section design, which would require a slightly wider right-of-way. There's also requirements regarding how much auxiliary parking is provided onsite. And one of those requirements is that there be parking within 300 feet for auxiliary purposes for visitors, within 300 feet of every residence in the development itself. We do not see that, as well as there's also not appropriate amount. We also would like to see, or there needs to be a resolution to several TPD's design requirements. On this has to do with FROB road, how it's designed, is it designed to connect to road standards? What type of construction, or how far are they going with the limits of that reconstruction? As well as a number of other TPD issues and some that actually do with traffic calming as well that has not been resolved. Also, there's a number of items regarding stormwater management from LSSE's report. This includes whether it's a geotechnical report, but also there's a number of items where we have inconsistencies throughout different plant sheets, as well as there's issues regarding number of easements and infiltration testing that still need to be addressed.
And just to give Mark a breath, at the meeting, we had our traffic engineer, our, our engineer, our outside engineers, all there explaining in great detail the deficiencies that Mark's identifying to the applicant. And again, we haven't seen any revisions that address these issues.
And I take it all these have been in writing?
Yeah, this pretty much mimics the letter and the meeting that was sent to the applicant.
Yeah, I was going to say that what you see, all these notes here were actually provided in a letter form as a denial letter, based on the actions of the planning commission taken on February 8th, I think it was.
And I guess I, I just respond to that by saying, you've heard a very long list of things. This is not a simple little subdivision. This is a very complex plan. We have a list of, as long as your arm, of deficiencies involving traffic, road design, you know, the conservation information. So this is not just a, a quick thing that the developer was being asked to deliver. And so they're just asking for a reasonable time to address all of that. You know, they've done a lot of development in this township and they know how to address these sort of items. They have, you know, Schleicher Engineering working on this. So I can assure you that they are working on addressing these issues.
Well, and council's already denied the extension request, so now they're just looking at the, whether they should approve or deny the plan itself, as submitted.
Well, I, I don't disagree with it. There is a lot here, but it, you know, it didn't preclude them from having another plan drafted at some point in time. I mean, you would think that you would concentrate your efforts trying to comply with the ordinances in the plan that you have filed, rather than updating the plans and updating the, I mean, that's just my position. I mean, I, I don't know whether it would have been done or not.
But the thing is, Frank, we didn't write the ordinance after they submitted the plan.
No, 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 no. The rules were in effect. The rules are rules, I understand that, but it just seems that.
Well, it's, it's a complex plan. And I would just take you back to the first iteration of all this. I mean, these are all issues that have come up since you folks tonight on December 11th. We sued you and then the next month, we get a whole laundry list of things that are wrong with the plan that had already been vetted for two years by the township. So that's my perspective. I'm sure you folks all have a different perspective.
Absolutely.
I, I know you do. I know you do. But I'm just trying to explain where we're coming from, that we had a very complex list of asks. And then we got more letters in February. So, I mean, there has been a history of dealing with the township and, you know, addressing these things. I can't speak to whether John Schleicher has been in contact with the staff. I don't know that.
Well, the answer's no.
Okay, all right. Well, take your word.
And, and the, the reality is, the township has, has pinged John because this was coming up to find out whether or not there were any plans for us to look at. And what we were left with, the impression, having talked to him, is that he would have to talk to Steve Kohler to find out whether any work was going to be done.
Yeah, and I can't speak to that.
And that's, that's.
I, I agree with that. But I guess to go back to why not submit this or that, I think maybe they didn't want to be shooting back things on a piecemeal basis. They wanted to come in with a more comprehensive response, so.
Maybe.
I don't, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
It's a maybe. I would just like to say, I'm looking at this and the promise has been made all along. I'm sorry, Steve Rens, I wrote it down. Steve Rens, 838 East McMurray Road. The promise has always been made about this conservation zones, that we would have high-density housing and then we would have green space. And if you look at the green space on this plan, it's three drainage digits. You know, it doesn't look like this is really in the spirit of what the, what the conservation zones were intended to be, to have a real green space. All we're doing is not developing the three spaces we could not have developed anyway. It looks like every square inch of that property is being developed and it's going to cause a lot of other problems for the community. So I really hope that we can push this back, deny this, and, and look for a much better plan, and certainly not one with townhouses. But that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Anyways, thank you.
There's another call.
Yes, you have me. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Hi, my name is Rajendra Chada. I've been resident of Peters Township for the last 18, 19 years, and I would definitely like to compliment Mr. Arcuri for actually making a comment that when, when a current plan has so many comments, the builder of the property not only disrespecting the council members for, and, and Peters Township for, for, for not responding to the comments, but they're actually submitting a plan, submitting another plan, which actually makes it even worse. And, and with the, with the town, with, with townhouses. So clearly, I think, you know, if we look at the ordinances, we have no opposition in terms of Peters Township growing, in terms of building houses. But moving from England, what attracted to us to Peters Township was the rolling hills and the scenic advantages that we actually had here. And by building developments, which are not only taking away the, one of the reasons why we bought into Peters Township was the ordinance that every house had to be half-an acre. And we've been very proud to actually live in the community. My two kids, they, they went through Peters Township school district, they both graduated and, and actually doing very well. So we certainly would like to live in Peters Township. We bought another, we made another investment, that what you actually see next to their FROB, FROB farm. And we are really concerned that the town, we don't want townhouses coming there at the top of the hill that you could actually see from anywhere. You could see from the trail, you could see from the hard farm, you could see from anywhere. So the developer has really, I, I don't think they actually have any respect for the ordinances. They have any respect for the respectable, respectable members of the, of the Peters Township here. They should really focus on addressing those comments first on the first plan, try to actually provide conservation spaces, try to actually maintain the skyline that, that we have. That's actually almost just one of the highest points in Peters Township. You could actually see it from anywhere. And, and to actually build, build that kind of density in the houses without, without having respect to the nature and without having respect to what Peters Township stands for, I think is ridiculous, in my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very well said.
Any other discussion from council or questions on this?
Well, I'll make a motion, since the preliminary plan does not comply with chapter 371, stormwater management, chapter 385 subdivision and land development, and chapter 440 zoning of the township code as enumerated in Mr. Holder's letter to Steve Kaler dated February 13th, 2024, I am going to move the council to deny the FROB farms' plan of lots.
Second.
I'll motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lowry. Next item on the agenda, if I can get this one right. Request for extension on time of FROB gardens' residential development as submitted on January 22nd.
So the plan was submitted to the township on January 22nd, the 90-day decision clock started on February 8th. The 90-day decision clock ends on May 8th, and quite frankly, I think that's the most relevant date on, on the chart. A review letter was sent out on March 4th. The planning commission tabled action on this on March 14th and intends to take up consideration of a recommendation on April 11th, at which time it would come back on April 22nd for action. What's being requested is a 90-day time extension, which would extend the date to June 13th. And the reason I say that the May 8th date is perhaps the most important is that where I think the developer has a right to ask of council a time extension, I think this request is premature. I think what's more, what's more appropriate is that if council wishes to consider a time extension, that that occur on, on April 22nd and that we, we ask the developer to continue to move towards addressing the concerns that have been enumerated by the planning department. Again, and on this plan, like the, the previous plan, that review letter is sitting there with the developer and nothing, we have had no interaction with the developer towards addressing those concerns. And again, it just seems to me that, that the request is premature. I think it's important for council to see what the developer intends to do.
And just to compare what you did last time, this was an agenda item, FROB2 at the, at the March meeting. So that's why you didn't give the extension, you just tabled your action until this evening. By contrast, this is not an agenda item tonight. There'll be no vote on FROB gardens. And again, to me, the, the same analysis the council would employ, it's premature for you to understand as to whether an extension is warranted until you, until you see where, how far along the process has come.
All right, I'll make a motion that we table this request until the April 22nd, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Is FROB gardens the same as FROB3?
Yes.
We just use one term then, or say both of them?
Yeah, from henceforth, let's just do one, two, and three. It'll be simpler.
Yeah. All right, thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lowry.
Can I ask a question on this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I'm Chris Todd, 801 Ashwood Drive.
You need to write your name.
I will do so. Okay. So my friends that live right at the intersection of FROB and Meredith couldn't be here, so this kind, this question is kind of on their behalf. So in layman's terms, to my simple understanding, FROB1 is now dead. Is that correct?
FROB1 is being litigated. The FROB2, which was on tonight's agenda, was denied. And I don't know what the developer's going to do with that decision.
Okay.
And then there is a third plan sitting out there that will be, that will be at the planning commission for a recommendation on April 11th.
And until the disposition of any one of those three things is completed, the conservation residential zoning stays in place?
Yes. Each of these were filed before.
Okay. So, so one isn't dead, dead, it's being litigated, and two, we'll see what happens now, and three, yes, come.
It's still.
You actually had a pretty good handle.
Oh, sorry, I didn't write it down. I got too busy talking, I'm sorry.
Well, he's writing, Maureen Jones, on East McMurray Road. I do have a question about this Plan 3, which I haven't seen. Plan 1 or 2 that we're talking about is 170 units that we're putting in there. How many plants are we talking, or units we're talking about in Plan 3?
Plan 3 would be 191.
All right, so 340, and if you, you know, if you multiply this, because most units have two cars, how are we going to handle all this traffic within the township?
Our transportation engineer has reviewed it. They believe there is capacity on the roads.
They must not have driven lately over on Sugar Camp, Brookwood, and FROB roads.
One of the issues we have is that we can't require offsite improvements. So intersections like Sugar Camp, FROB and Sugar Camp, and FROB and what's down the hill there? Beavow. Those would be considered offsite, so we can't require the developer to actually make improvements there, which there probably are improvements that are required even under today's conditions.
I, I just, it just amazes me. We keep putting more and more units into this. Our roads are made for, to quote Mr. Lowry, for farmers. We're not made, you know, they're not appropriated for this amount of traffic and we're not doing a whole lot of audit. And yet, I, you know, I see traffic backing up on East McMurray daily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you write your name down? Yes, I did.
Okay. Will you vote on that? Next item, agenda, agenda item, authorization as this Timberlake Homeowners Association to obtain title to open space.
Sure. We're going to credit Mr. Holder for this. He has solved the mystery of the ownership of this small tract of land that, that sits on top of Shady Crest. If you'll recall, last, late last year, Mr. Lutz came in, he owns the property to the left, and he would like access to Shady Crest Court for the purposes of developing his, his property. As what's been described to us is it's a limited number of larger homes. At the time, the, if you were to go to the Washington County tax advocate, that parcel, that 25-foot wide parcel, would have been shown to be owned by Peters Township. And to give you an idea of what that parcel looks like, this is what it looks like on the street. So what was discovered is that back in, in 1993, Shady Crest Court, the plan was changed to accommodate some type of grading problem. And this created this 25-foot strip. And what this is, is a quotation taken from a letter written by Dot Mills, who was the planning director at the time, to Michael Silvestre, who was the manager. And what it tells you is, we're going to create this 25-foot strip, it's going to belong to the homeowners association, but the subdivision agreement's going to require that the homeowners association give the Peters Township council the authority to allow a connection onto the adjacent property. So when the subdivision agreement was actually done, it actually, it actually addresses this and talks about this parcel P. When the, the deed was recorded, transferring all of the spaces, the open spaces between the developer and the homeowners association, this is the part of the deed that was recorded for parcel P. First thing I would note, there's no reference in here to granting the township authority to, to make a decision about cross-access, so that needs to be corrected. But the other thing that must have occurred in the recorder of deeds office, and you could never do this today, is that someone took a pen and corrected the tax ID number. And when they did that, it referenced parcel B, which is at the bottom of the hill, and left out parcel P. So parcel P has never been transferred. When Mr. Holder looked at this, we also discovered there's a second parcel that was never, never transferred to the homeowners association. And normally, what I would be telling you is, it's the homeowners association's responsibility to get this corrected because the ownership of the property is in their name. But, you know, having spoken with Mr. Smith, we have a property interest in this parcel, and that is this reservation for council to decide whether or not it can be used as access to the adjacent property. And so what I'm suggesting to council is that we authorize Mr. Smith on behalf And so, what I'm suggesting to council is that we authorize Mr. Smith, on behalf of the township and the homeowners association, to go into court and acquire the title on these two parcels, and at that time, implement the restriction that was shown in the subdivision improvement agreement that grants council that authority. The other thing I would tell you is, and I've had this discussion with Mr. Lutz, is that if in fact we get this authority, it's a discretionary authority. It doesn't grant him a right to access, and council has to grant that. You know, if you go up and look at this parcel, unlike every other street that ends in a temporary cul-de-sac, there's no sign on here saying that this will be extended for another street. And so, I would think you'd, when we get to the point that we actually have ownership, we would want to talk to the homeowners association and get their opinion about interconnection. And I think in fairness, we would want to get the input from the neighbors to find out their opinion, or for that matter, even the plan as a whole, since it is a discretionary thing, so.
So, who's mowing? Are we mowing that grass on that strip, or is the HOA mowing it?
I think the HOA's mowing it.
Well, we're not going to own this parcel, right?
No, but you're going to have the right...
We have a right to grant it easement. Okay.
No, I think you don't have the right to grant, you have the right to allow access. You don't want to grant an easement.
Right. Yeah, you're correct.
For some reason, that what Mr. Lauer explained, it just didn't make it into the deed, and the developer is gone. So, I don't know if we could do a corrective deed on our own, or if we'd have to acquire title, but...
Somebody didn't have a problem putting a pen in it to the document we just looked at.
I could tell you, you cannot do that, the recorders of the deed now.
Believe it or not, that used to happen fairly often. I remember when I first started pricing, you'd go up there and someone would look at it and just take a pen and add their own interpretations to the document.
Yeah. Based upon our experience lately trying to record things, that would never happen today.
The developer's gone, so you can't even decide a corrective deed. So, I don't think you have any choice but to follow that.
That's why I'm concerned.
Yes, sir. Hi, my name's Len Lutz. My brother and I are the co-executors of my father's estate, which is the adjoining property. I came and spoke to you in August of last year about this originally. Just as a clarification matter, we're not looking to put a development there. We're looking to subdivide 22 acres into approximately six or seven lots for houses. The shape of our particular lot is actually much narrower on the frontage of McComb's Road, which is where all the lots currently have frontage. So, we were looking to, because this 25-foot deep strip is approximately 200-foot wide, we were looking to acquire or gain access to this so that we could meet zoning requirements for frontage for two single-family lots off of Shady Crest. So, we weren't looking for traffic access or road access. We're not interested in building a development. We just want to break it off into a little bit more manageable pieces and be able to get frontage to some of the more difficult areas of the property to reach. It would be difficult to reach from McComb's Road.
Well, see, now, I don't know that we can do that under the language of that. Can you put up that letter for Mrs. Mills again?
Well, what's more important is this language, because this is what's in the subdivision improvement agreement.
For the development, okay. All right.
This is will.
For the development of the deed property. Okay, all right, that, never mind.
Yeah, and we realized that, I actually started the whole mystery tour of finding out who owns this parcel. We realized that, you know, we would probably have to approach the homeowners association now that we figure out that they're... I actually came to you because the county website said that Peters Township owned it.
Yeah, but actually, you don't have to appreciate, I mean, we'll sit down with the homeowners association. The decision, based upon that language, is strictly council's decision. Now, having said that, I think we have to get input from the homeowners association.
And I would have to, it's my understanding that if they are then the deeded owner, we would have to acquire it from them.
Yeah, because that's what you would want, because we wouldn't want to take, if we took title, we'd have to put it up for public auction. He'd have to, they would have to buy it from the HOA.
Well...
Because if they want to use it as front yard, essentially, but if I understand you correctly, Mr. Lutz, you want to use that as front yard, right?
Front yard or literally driveway, honestly. You know, part of the nice thing about the topology there is, it would provide some great views and some great privacy. And literally, just pulling a driveway through there is all that I'm most concerned about.
So, you're looking at for two lots.
Exactly. For two single-family homes.
So, Mr. Cozer, I think we would have to, we're going to go back and do research again. We're going to have to find out what the nature of parcel P is, whether it's open space, or whether it's, was intended to be needed...
For traffic.
Be simple. I don't know that. But I do know he has a right to cross it.
Oh, yeah, so that's where the issue comes from. Because if it's dedicated as open space, I don't know if the HOA has the authority to sell it to you.
Okay.
We can, based on that language there, in my opinion, Mr. Smith, you may think differently, but we could certainly allow two driveways to go through.
I mean, we have the ability to provide the street access, again, not to get that far ahead of council, potentially. And who knows what a court will do, acquire a title. HOA may go in there and fight and say, I mean, something different, I don't know.
No, actually, having spoken to the HOA president, they'd like to get this squared away.
Yeah, it's interesting that the handwritten title thing that they did was for the huge green space that includes the pond and all the community green space for that entire development down by Bevau Road, where they've got the walkways and the pavilions and stuff. It's like they forgot to add that one piece in, and that was the most important.
But it's, in a way, fortuitous, though, because if it would have been recorded this way, there is no provision for the township to allow access across it.
Are you going to cap it, like, six lots?
We have an engineer that we're going to have work on laying out the lots. We don't know what that's going to be, based on his analysis of zoning and being able to meet all the zoning requirements for lots from Shady Crest, from Venetia. Until we know whether or not it's even possible to have access up there, I don't want to pay him to do a whole development and then find out we can't do it, so. But yeah, we're looking at between six and seven lots, depending on how it lays out.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you.
So, we need a motion to authorize, Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the solicitor to take those steps necessary to acquire a title to parcel P. Is that what it is? On behalf of, I guess, ourselves and/or the homeowners association?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Seven, nothing.
You would think the developer, even though they're not around, have no interest either way.
You wouldn't think, yeah.
I mean, from a notice standpoint, I don't know that the court would require me to do anything to...
Well, I think you'd probably have to notice them, right? Because deed property is still in their name.
I know, they're just non-existent.
Well, you'd have to...
I don't feel like opening an estate or doing anything.
No, I don't think you'd have to. I think you'd just do the notice via publication, wouldn't you? Do a petition for alternative service and just say they're no longer in business.
Or alive, I think that's the problem.
Yeah. Thank you. Payroll bills, Mr. Steigl.
Sir, prior to this evening's meeting, I reviewed the payroll and bills, and based on that review, I'm going to move that we approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Correspondents, seeing none. Any updates on reports? Seeing none. Miscellaneous, Mr. Lauer?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, Kevin Cushey, equipment operator in the Public Works Department. Kevin, his first job was working for the Peters Township Public Works Department, and he's been here since, I believe, 1980. And he is a good employee, and he will be missed, but he intends to retire now, and like I say, he has been here and done that work inside that department for such a long time.
And I believe he was the last township employee to be hired by Jim Ross, correct?
Oh, wow. He may well be. He may well be.
We're going to give him a back when he leaves or something?
I don't think he wants to get on a back or a frontliner again.
So, thank you for that.
The other thing under miscellaneous, I just want to make sure, and I'm not sure whether it's in this set of bills or not, but the Venetia Heritage Society has asked for a contribution in the past. We have given them $1,000.
Need a motion, second. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
What isn't on the list for miscellaneous, and I just want to bring this to council's attention, because we're getting telephone calls on it.
We've got emails, we know.
Now, this is Peters Lake, that you can see up above. This is in North Terbane. There's a plan that's been submitted, and it's going through the conditional use process in North Terbane. It's for a number of quarter-acre lots up against the lake. The township really has no authority in this area. The one thing that I explained to the manager of North Terbane that we have an interest in is making sure that whatever the discharge, because it is so close to the lake, is being addressed. So, you know, my intention is, as this moves along, is to express our concern not only to North Terbane, but also to the Washington County Conservation District. That having been said, though, I think you, if they choose to pursue this, I think you're going to see this plan move forward. The one thing that I would note, because, you know, one of the concerns that has been expressed is the fact that you're going to take whatsoever on these roads and whatsoever in these yards, and it's going to go into the lake. But if you look at the watershed that feeds the lake, the fact of the matter is, there is a lot of discharge that comes off of roads within Peters Township, that discharge into that lake. And this is, you know, in terms of its impact, it's no different than what you would see elsewhere. You know, for that matter, there's a lot of discharge that comes into this that comes off of farm property, and I will guarantee you, you know, that discharge is also of a concern, so. But, so we'll follow it, but I just don't want to mislead people into believing that we have a lot of authority in this area, so.
Where does Peters Township own in regards to around the lake?
We own both sides of the lake. The line for...
The trail all the way around is in Peters, is that...
Yes, the...
I thought it was owned by Peters, but in North Terbane.
Yes.
I got it right, Gary.
That's right. The municipal boundary is actually through the middle of the lake. We own property in North Terbane.
So, we actually do have an interest, because essentially, we are an owner of property in North Terbane, right?
Yes.
Thank you for that update.
Before we adjourn, can I ask you a question? What's that street that I talked to you about? Is that Maple? What's the one that comes across from Powell Pittsburgh? Is that Hill?
Maplewood.
Maplewood? Remember, we got that lot on the corner?
Yes.
We got, has anybody ever gone out there to see if that sight distance, if you're looking left, if you're coming down that hill?
Oh, it's better.
I know, but is it within, like, the parameter? Because I saw something online where somebody was saying they almost got rear-ended there, waiting to make, you know, they went, I guess they were making a right, you know, and they wanted a...
A mirror.
A mirror, something like that. And I just told them I'd bring it up.
Well, that's a Pendote Road, and Pendote will not put a mirror on.
They won't not let that happen.
No.
But I mean, is there anything, if you feel that that sight distance is adequate...
It's improved, you know, is that an ideal sight distance? No, but having acquired that and cleaned that lot, you know, having come down there and made that...
So, there's really, really little that we can do about anything.
Paul, one other thing.
Thank you.
I had a couple of people complain about that lot on the corner of Boyer and Bauer Hill, now that they've taken all the trees down, it's sort of, it's a steep drop down there now. Because, you know, when you come down Bauer Hill towards past Boyer, it's like a steep drop-off now, since all the trees are gone. Is there any way we can look at that, put a guardrail there or something like that?
We can run up, take a look at that.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks for bringing that up. It's like when they took all those trees down on Frobey there.
Yeah, for an upcoming meeting as well, I saw in another state championship, it's a unified bocce team, which I don't even know how to play bocce. We need to remember the... But if we could line that team up as well.
I think we're having the dance team come in on...
Seventh.
Yeah, the next meeting, so we can do the meeting after that.
I could see him over there.
They can all teach us how to play bocce when they...
Any other agenda items for next meeting? Okay. For German, thank you.